Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.
Are we good? I would like to call the Madison City School Board of Education meeting for September 9, 2021. Can we stand for the pledge? Ms. Keane, roll call, please.
Here. Here.
Here.
Board, please review the agenda. Can I have a motion and a second to approve?
Go move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Cummins, second mic, it's Lesman. Let's all vote. All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any scenes? Agenda pass. We're going to be having our second budget hearing. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, Dr. Nichols and Board. This will be the second public hearing. The first one was on the 30th and today's is the second final public hearing. And so, a few changes that from the last public hearing. First thing I'm going to do is go over the cost of Madison City Schools to focus on decreasing class sizes. The second thing is enrollment numbers. I'm updating those to reflect the 3rd of September. And the last thing was, as far as the budget, we updated a couple of the allocations. So this slide right here is the cost to reduce our pupil teacher ratio for Madison City Schools. There was a question from the last public hearing as far as our class sizes and how our teacher pupil ratios were. And so, it's real, it's all based on revenues and expenditures. And so, Madison City was ranked at 81 for revenues and then 102 for expenditures. But for us to actually, Madison City for actually, for us to jump from class size 17 to go to where everyone really wants to be, the class size of 12 or 13, that will cost Madison City about $10.5 million. And that's just in staffing, personnel. And so, on top of that would be more space for our growth, our students, and so on and so forth. So it will be an additional amount of money after the $10.5 million. The next slide here is a comparison of class sizes. The systems that are listed there are all of the systems from the previous slide of all of the school systems that we compare ourselves with. It's, if you look at the slide, it's the various systems. The next column is the ADM or the amount of students within that school system. The next column is the amount of facilities that each of those school systems have and then the current class size from all of those systems. And so, in the blue is Madison City Schools. Currently, we're at 12,254 kids and we're at a class size of 17. And so, for us to actually have 11 facilities and this ADM and this growth that we have, we should have at least 1,000 kids at every school, which is impossible to have with our 11 facilities. And so, that kind of illustrates how much money it would cost for our school system to pay to actually reduce our class sizes from 17 to where we really want to be at 12 or 13.
Now, Ms. Williams, I'm looking at, in actuality, like Limestone County says they have 12,600 students, but their actual enrollment in schools is 8,500. They, 4,000 of those 12,000 are virtual students from all across the state. They're not actually inside school buildings. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes. But it does, I mean, that amount there is what they have to report to the state, so that is correct. And the next slide is just our current enrollment as of the 3rd of September. Just wanted to update that in this meeting. So for pre-K, we are, we grew 33, 33 students from 277 kids to 310. And then for our K through Dell, K through 12 enrollment, our unfunded growth is about 418 students. Like I said earlier, we're at 12,254 students in our system. And so, the total of 451 additional students, Madison City would have to pay from local money. And so, that would equate to about $1.8 million that we would have to spend out of local money. And so, unfunded growth is money that we would receive in arrears. So we won't receive this money until next year.
And that $1.8 million would just strictly be on staff?
That's correct.
That does not include facilities?
No, that's correct. That is all I have.
More, do we have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Dr. Nichols, do we have any presentations?
Yes, sir, Ms. Vice President. We have several presentations tonight. First, I'm going to invite Mr. Larry Vanoy to come forward. We, Mr. Vanoy is going to come forward. And we had several young men and young women who participated this summer in Boys and Girls State, sponsorship of the American Legion and the Auxiliary of the American Legion. And we are honored about them and they are here with us tonight. I hope most of them, along with Ms. Lambert, Dr. Clayton, and Mr. Vanoy is going to introduce them to us. Now, Mr. Vanoy, at the city council meeting, the mayor said briefly.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just was checking on that. I noticed, I noticed Mr. Finley said that and everybody laughed and I just wondered how that worked, but obviously, there's something I need to learn about all this.
Maybe some of you know I was a politician in the past and you know how that works. But I had an opportunity on the council to speak often times and they got after me for delaying the meetings occasionally. I think it was a football Monday night or something and happening when those were, those problems were taking place. But anyway, I'm Larry Vanoy. I'm the Madison Parent American Legion Post 229 commander and the District 12 commander, which encompasses another 12 posts within the state. What I'm here for, here tonight for is just to share, share with you a little bit about the American Legion program called Boy State. And then I'm going to let Jean talk. She's my vice commander and also president of the, the Unit 229 Auxiliary. And she's, she's going to talk a little bit about the Girl State component. But anyway, Boy State is a, is a nationally recognized program and each state within the nation has a program where they, they represent, they, oh, let me read this. Just let me read this real quick. American Legion Boy State was founded in 1935 and is among the most respected and selected, selective of educational programs of government, of government instruction with the United States high school programs. It was, it became part of an operation of local and county and state governments. And the American Legion Auxiliary sponsors a separate but similar program for young women called Girl State. This program is for young men. Boy State is for young men that are juniors getting ready to be seniors in high school. At Boy State, the participants learn the rights, privileges, and responsibilities of franchised citizens. The training, the training is objective and centers on the structure of city, county, and state governments and operates by, is operated by students elected to various offices. Boy State activities include legislative sessions, court proceedings, law enforcement presentations, assemblies, bands, courses, and recreational programs. We, as a county, do this, do Boy State as a county. Typically, we bring 75 of about 650 young men that go to Boy State. This last year was in Tuscaloosa at, at the University of Alabama and has been there for the last few years. However, however, it's moving to Troy State next year. Now, what I wanted to share with you, and we've got many parents here, but I've also many of you educators here, that this is a very outstanding program for the young men and young women to learn leadership responsibilities, team building, respect for the flag, and understand how federal and state governments operate. So this is a great program and it's a week-long program down there in Tuscaloosa. It's a selective program where counselors or, or principals have to recognize that these, these individuals are, are of character and interest to participate. So they have to sign off on that. Now, this last year, we had nine participants between Bob Jones and James Clemmons. And that is, hence, testimony to the leadership within the two high schools of recognizing this is an important program and sharing it with the students. And then the young men and young ladies stepping forward to participate. We have got a very outstanding history within the state as well for Boy State. The year 2018, we had the governor, which replicates the government of the state, was from James Clemmons High School. The next year, 2019, again, James Clemmons was the governor of 650 young men. They were the ones selected for the highest position within the state of Boy State. Then in 2021, we did not have Boy State, Boy State in 2020 because of the COVID pandemic. But 2021, we did have the program again and we'll recognize one of those young men actually was elected to Vice President of the United States when he went to Boys Nation. We had four young men that went to Boys Nation. Two of them, they, they divided into parties when they, both at Boy State and at Boys Nation. And we had actually the two candidates for Boys, Boys Nation Vice President, both came from the city of Madison. So that was incredible achievement. So what I've got here is I've got certificates and I, did you all have a certificate?
Yes, sir, we do.
To present. So we got certificates we'd like to present to the young men and young ladies. And what I had done at the council meeting and would like to give them an opportunity just to give a sentence or two about what their experience was like and maybe what they accomplished while they were there. I think they've got a, a great story to share and public speaking is one of the opportunities they got while they were there. So I'll have them, each of them come forward and if you just stand up here when you're done, and, and then we'll walk through the list. So Jack Bell. Sebastian Davis. I know Sebastian from soccer years ago with my young man, young kid, young, my, my son that's a senior, Bob Jones this year, but Sebastian and I go way back. And as all these boys are quite, quite, quite accomplished, I know Sebastian is one of them. Caleb Johnson. I said I would share with you, each of you, if you had anything you'd want to share about your participation out there. But if you don't want to, that's okay too. Roland Matthews. Well, congratulations, sir. Amber Grant. All right, who else we got here? Aaron McNair. Samuel Glover is, his parents here? All right. So Samuel, so we didn't have Boy State last year, but several young people, young men wanted to participate. So they actually came in as their, after they graduated from high school, but they still wanted to participate before they started college. Well, Samuel's off to college, but his dad is here to represent him today. So he's at Auburn, is that correct? You know? University of Alabama. And I want to thank you for your service, sir.
No, no, thank you so very much. Metallurgical Engineering, excited to thank you so very much because, you know, definitely not being from this community to be in the warm welcome, but I have a great opportunity. I went to Boy State, almost 30 years ago, so I'm proud of Boy State, so feel humbled to have you.
Thank you. And then I got Christian Rice. Yes. Okay, sure.
Dr. Nichols, thank you for having us. I'm going to just, for a moment, I want to tell you a little bit about the difference about the Girl State and the Boy State. The Auxiliary sponsors Girl State, but they, they run basically through the same program of learning about patriotism and federal and state government, local government as well. But the Girl State, it's based on the population of the high schools. So if a school has up to 200 in the junior class, we, they get to send one candidate. From 200 to 600 in the junior class, you get to send two candidates. Any school over 600, you get three candidates. So we had to be selective about who we chose to send or represent us. So this is the first year that Madison City's Auxiliary has been able to send candidates. And we picked some really amazing young women to represent Bob Jones and James Clemmons. So I want to introduce them. This is Bob Jones, two delegates, Sarah Birbar. Sarah, tell us, what position did you hold at Girl State?
Um, so I was elected into the state position of Supreme Court Justice.
And then the other one from James Clemmons is Alana Spurling. And what you tell us what you did at Girl State?
Um, at Girl State, I decided to run for governor and even though I didn't win, I learned a lot about just like the entire government process and made a lot of new, good friendships.
And where are you going to school?
Um, I'm applying to West Point in New York.
So, um, one of the girls that I'm here with, two candidates from Bob Jones, Gillian Pennell, she ran for governor as well. And she ended up, I believe, on the Senate Theater, represented. Anyhow, Gillian is at the Air Force Academy right now doing her interview and doing her site tour. So she has a really bright future ahead of her. And then finally, my other Bob Jones student, Leah Lesman. Leah, why don't you tell us what you might want to say?
Okay, so I speak for all, me and these two ladies up here. It was such a great experience. The amount of friendships and the people you meet there is truly just like amazing. It's one of a kind of an opportunity. I actually ran for State Board of Education and I was elected for that as well. And the experience you get while running is just amazing. Just the whole thing was amazing, so.
All right. So I may have mentioned that we had four, four of our members that actually got to attend Boys Nation. And that was a week-long trip to Washington DC, which includes holding, running for office within Congress, within Senate, within the, with the Supreme Court, and with the legislative, with the executive offices, president, vice president. So we had one of our, one of our members actually, actually campaigned for and was elected to Vice President, and that's Cameron Cummings. So Cameron, if you want to just say a couple of words about your experience down there at both at Boy State and at Boys Nation, that'd be great.
Sure. Um, like you said, my name's Cameron Cummings. I'm now a senior at Bob Jones High School. I was sponsored to go by, go down to Boy State at the last second by the Huntsville Capital League, which is like a junior fraternity I won president of and they thought it'd be a good opportunity for me to go down and grow as a leader down at Boy State. Um, I went down there with not that much knowledge of the program. I did some research beforehand, but pretty much accepted when they offered me to go down there. I'm sorry, when I got down there, I met like a slew of completely new people. One of my roommates was Christian, so that was probably one of the only familiar faces I saw for a long time. But also met a bunch of other people from Sparkman. The other Alabama senator was from Dalton, Dalton, down in South Alabama. So I know I met a lot of different people with a lot of different viewpoints. Some people that have like grown up in bigger cities, some people who aren't more rural, working with tractors every day. So a lot of viewpoints politically and socially was completely different. Deciding that to run for senator down at Boy State for the opportunity, not only for Boys Nation, but to grow myself personally, to become better and just have a chance at politics, to see what it was like, to see how it was running a election. I ran with the Federalist Party for the party nomination. I won that with a very close race and went on to run for the, in the general. That was a lot of fun. And when I got offered to go to Boys Nation, I did not turn it down at all. Down there was completely different game. It was a lot of firsts, a lot of firsts for me. One of the first would be flying alone, never done that before. Missing flights, falling asleep and missing flights, a lot of rescheduling, but it was something I don't think I'd ever take back. Getting down there and running for Vice President was a lot harder, in my opinion, because I knew everyone there ran for something, they won something and they deserved to be there. So they knew what they wanted to do and it'd be a lot harder to convey my message of why I should be chosen over all these other candidates. I think I ran against another 19 candidates for Vice President, so I was, there was no shortage of people wanting that position. I end up winning the also Federalist Party nomination, I think 26 to 24. So knowing that it was a very close race and I was representing a party, it was a lot of fun. I ran against another Alabama senator, my roommate, Aiden. It was a lot of fun running with him, running against him, and I don't think that's something I would ever take back in a memory I will forget. So thank you everyone for allowing me to be up here.
Real quickly in closing, so the American Legion, I think you all probably know because we get a lot of visibility, do a lot of things for the youth and the, and the community. And Boy State and Girl State are some of our keystone programs. We also run an oratorical contest every year that has to do with the Constitution. I encourage you to, anybody that likes to public, do public speaking or get training in that to participate. We are heavily engaged with the ROTC units within the city. They come out and help us, a lot of the programs that we do, and we help them as a result as well, as well as provide awards to them for us, for both academic and military bearing, bearing. And we have a junior shooters program that we participate with them as well. They help us with putting out flags and recent holidays, live retirement ceremonies. And we really enjoy the youth. It's very important to us that we, we have them engaged and understand how great a nation we have. And, and I, I know all of you will recognize that and we're very proud to be a part of the, part of the community and supporting the youth. Thank you.
Thank you to Jean and Larry and all of the Legion and Auxiliary for the work that they do and the commitment they have to our young people. And to these fine young people here, we are so proud of you and proud of the representation you made across the state and this country for our Madison City Schools and your family. And we're, we're, our country's in good hands in the future. I think looking at all of you, we're, we're going to be a good ship. We're so honored and you did such a great job. Let's give them another thank you. Pat would like all of you to meet out front so he can get a picture of all of you so we can put it on the website and broadcast about you. So thank you so much. Oh, there was some, oh, I got some folks. I know. Christian, I, I had your cameras, they were hitting up a bit.
Joshua Taylor.
Tell them, buddy. You're double whipping, you came in and out again.
Thank you, Mr. Uppery.
Hello, sir. Recognition? I'm still doing it.
All right.
May I go forward?
Absolutely.
Our next presentation, Mr. President, members of the board, is from Ms. Patricia Bachelor. She is representing the Madison City Parent Teacher Association.
Could I turn this around?
Thank you, Dr. Nichols, members of the board. We'll just, we'll just hold it here.
That's what you get for moving it.
That is, that is what I get for moving it.
There you go. There you go, PJ. I tried to help you out.
You did, you did. All right. So I'm the president of the Madison City Council of PTAs. So Dr. Nichols introduced us as the Parent Teacher Association, which is the oldest and largest child advocacy association in the United States. Today, PTA includes more than 4 million parents, teachers, grandparents, caregivers, foster parents, and others, all of whom share a commitment to improving education, health, and safety of all children. We try to speak with one voice for every child. So PTA's mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. Many of the benefits that our children receive today, such as universal kindergarten, the National School Lunch Program, juvenile justice system, these were all accomplished as a result of the PTA mission. And to carry out our mission, we utilize a framework of national PTA standards to build family-school partnerships, which are to welcome all families, communicate effectively, support student success, speak up for every child, share power, and to collaborate with the community. So everything our PTAs do try to encompass one or more of these standards. And since PTA, sorry, since September is PTA Membership Month, we wanted to highlight some of the great things that our PTAs are doing and to recognize the PTA leaders from each of our schools. I could literally talk for days about the amazing things that our PTAs are doing, which include everything from back-to-school events to increasing mental health awareness, to supporting teachers, to creating community spirit, to promoting literacy, to fostering curiosity and excitement about STEM. But Dr. Nichols has asked the previous presenter to be brief, and so I shall try to do the same. So I'll start with our elementary schools. And I've asked the leaders if they could, if they could be here. Not all of them could be here tonight, but if I call, when I call your name, if you would, just come stand up at the front. So the Columbia Elementary PTA officers include President Abby Cobb, membership Amanda Kupker, programs Heather Santos, fundraising Justin Alexander, volunteers Jenny Robbins, treasurer Allison Walter, public affairs Eva Bryce, and secretary Rachel Schrant. So the Columbia Elementary PTA does an amazing job supporting teachers with startup classroom funds and supporting student success by providing programs like The Leader and Me, which boosts school and youth leadership development, and the Fund Day Friday program, which is the school's positive behavior reward system. The Heritage Elementary PTA officers, and you guys can please, if you want to stand and we'll all clap for everyone at the end, or if you need to slide on out, whatever, whatever works. The Heritage Elementary PTA officers include President Stephanie Davidson, vice president Sapna Rabey, vice president Nicole Aniker, volunteers Erin Miller, fundraising Lindsay Miller, treasurer Shalina Hirdink, and secretary. Over the past year, the Heritage PTA has helped to purchase new library furniture, water fountains, playground equipment, safety cameras, and safety backpacks for their teachers. And they also provide new mulch every year for the playground. The Horizon Elementary PTA officers include President Julie Strueling, vice president Betsy Allison, volunteers Janelle Cook, programs Katie Koschefer, treasurer Allison Spratley, and secretary Mandy Durham. So Horizon Elementary PTA is really embracing the standard to welcome all families this year for those new to Madison City Schools and families rezoned and families returning to in-person learning after a virtual school last year. They've already hosted a number of events so far this year, such as coffee and Kleenex with the kindergarten parents, pastries with the principal at the school, and also painting with the principal, which was held in Trianna. And for those of you who don't know, the City of Trianna students attend Madison City Schools. The Madison Elementary PTA officers include President Kenneth McKnight, programs Joni McKnight, membership Amber Hanselmeyer, volunteers Emily McKay, treasurer Brooke Shields, and secretary Michael McKay. So they are a PTA of two dynamic husband-wife duo teams. Madison Elementary is one of our smallest schools, but you really wouldn't know it based on the amount of concentrated effort that their PTA puts towards hosting back-to-school Bash, sorting and delivering school supply kits, and helping to maintain their playground as well. The Midtown Elementary PTA officers include President Stacy Sellers, vice president of membership Janay Plot, VP of Programs Michelle Epling, VP of Volunteers Jan Anderton, treasurer Caitlin Teniel, and secretary Melissa Davidson. The Midtown PTAs had to really hit the ground running with the opening of their new school and has really worked hard to support teachers during the move-in and set up, along with securing donations of items like basketballs, sanitizing wipes, and school supplies for students from local businesses. The Mill Creek Elementary PTA officers include President Megan Weber, membership Kelly Morrison, programs Erin Roberts, volunteers Melissa Sutherland, communications Jessica Lu Allen, treasurer Ashley Taylor, and secretary Josanne Angst. The Mill Creek PTA has been hard at work supporting their teachers with a back-to-school lunch and introducing their specials to the community. So those are members of the staff that aren't necessarily, they're not necessarily a teacher, but they're vitally important to the function of the school, such as the school nurse. They've also been supporting their new and returning parents by sharing helpful information from the school's curriculum nights, and also hosting a parent university, which has covered topics ranging from explaining their house system to transitioning to middle school to explaining the one-to-one device plan for Madison City Schools, along with internet safety. The Rainbow Elementary PTA officers include President Candace Cooper, membership and volunteers Allison Fuller, fundraising Mallory Clemmons, programs Emma Jones, treasurer Danielle Langowitz, secretary Erin Howell. The Rainbow Elementary PTA has welcomed new families by hosting a kindergarten sneak peek, which is really great, because if you think about it, going to kindergarten can be quite scary. So at least that gives those students a first glance at the, the school and then being able to meet the administration. They also work to secure, sort, and deliver school supply kits, and they do a great job of maintaining high levels of school spirit with their Wacky Wednesdays. So I encourage you to check out their posts on that, they're really great, and other school events that they host. The Discovery Middle PTA officers include President Loretta Justice, coVPs of membership Jonna Brazile and Janay Plot, coVPs of programs Sierra Jennings and Amy Fruchnick, and coVPs of volunteers Katie Chatham and Ashley, Ashley Lang, communications Jessica Harris, treasurer Stephanie Kokan, and secretary Sarita Edwards. The Discovery Middle School PTA started off the year with a back-to-school luncheon for their teachers, and since school has started, they've also held regular meet-and-greets for parents immediately following drop-off at school, which is really a fabulous way for new and returning parents to get to know each other. It really helps to create that sense of community for the school. They also have been hosting craft day and had the foresight to jump on getting a coat drive done, because before we know it, that cold weather's going to be here. The Liberty PTA officers include President Tony Opsy, membership Kelly Herndon, Ways and Means Terry Regensberger, volunteers Joy Howard, treasurer Janay Nichols, and secretary Michelle Wimberly. Like many other PTAs, the Liberty Middle PTA does a golden apple lunch for their teachers at the beginning of the year. They're in the middle of raising funds right now to support the purchase of water bottle fill stations, which have been really important because of the pandemic, and also upgrades to their school bell system. The Bob Jones High School PTA officers are, again, mentioned, president Sarita Edwards, membership Allison Fuller, volunteers Jenny Jimenez, treasurer Stephanie Kokan, and secretary Loretta Justice. These ladies have been working really hard this year to step up their social media presence and to better support the communication about school events and other topics important to parents and students. One of the myths about PTA is that somehow it stops after elementary and middle school, and that's absolutely not true. The PTA plays, or PTSA, I should say, plays a very important role at the high school level with offering opportunities to students for volunteer and other types of civic engagement. They also help to secure, the Bob Jones PTSA also helped to secure improvements for their schools as well, such as the water bottle fill stations. The James Clemmons High School PTSA officers are president Tony Opsy, membership me, volunteers Denise Swain, communications Jody Meter, treasurer Heather Jezeval, secretary Ashley Brown, and member-at-large Michelle Wimberly. The JC PTSA held their grab-and-go breakfast for teachers and staff before school started, and also sourced monthly teacher treats, such as staples and dry erase markers. Most recently, they've invited the Enrichment Center to come speak at the PTA General Meeting and discuss mental health awareness. JC also offers, JCHS PTSA also offers opportunities for student involvement, along with scholarships for seniors. I would like to mention that both of our middle school PTAs and both of our high school PTSAs have been working together in conjunction with the central office to put together a mental health and wellness fair that will be taking place next week at James Clemmons on the 14th, starting at 5:30. I'm sorry I didn't put that in the presentation. Registration is required, so you can find information about how to do that on the Madison City PTA Facebook page. I want to take a second and thank all these wonderful individuals, present or not, for stepping up for their schools. And in summary, I want to challenge everyone to take up the PTA mission. It is vitally important because research has shown that there is a positive and convincing relationship between family and community involvement and student success, regardless of race, ethnicity, class, or parent education. So if you have not yet, please join one or more of our local PTAs, because your membership directly impacts the success of our schools in this system. Thank you.
Thank you, PJ, and thank all of you who are serving our schools. And I enjoy each month getting the opportunity to meet when they have their PTA meeting here and opportunity to interact with these leaders and answer questions and ask them questions, and certainly appreciate the leadership we get of the city PTA. Did you name the city PTA officers, PJ?
I did not.
Okay.
City council PTS, oh, sorry, that, thank you so much, because I'm obviously challenged today. Madison City Council of PTA's elected officers are me, Patricia Bachelor, the president. We have coVPs, so Stephanie Walker, who does most of our social media, and not present tonight, Terry Regensberger, and then also Heather Jezeval as our treasurer, and again, Sarita Edwards, who's omnipresent as our secretary.
So Sarita, you're two presidents and a secretary, right? Two secretaries, okay. We just thought the boys' and girl's state was a lot. I'm thinking you might win the award. I don't know what award that would be, probably the award that you don't say no. That might be it, I don't know. But, but obviously you say yes, and, and we appreciate all of you and what you do and, and the commitment you have to our schools and our faculties and our students. You do a tremendous job, and it helps us to have a great school system because we have great PTAs and PTSAs. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the board, we have from United Way, Ms. Claudia Boucher and Ms. Lynn Kreese.
I liked your idea. I'm going to steal it.
Just don't mess with the microphone.
Okay, so move up to the microphone. Dr. Nichols and members of the board, thank you so much for having us today. I'm Claudia Boucher, the director of development at United Way of Madison County. This is Ben Robb. He is our campaign chair for the United Way, and he is also with Public Supermarkets on Winchester, the store in Winchester. So he is going to go ahead and start the presentation first, and then I will come back and follow up.
Hello, everybody. So as Claudia said, my name is Benjamin Robb. I work for Public Supermarkets. Can everyone hear me? I'm kind of too tall for the microphone. But first of all, I would like to acknowledge that, yeah, I want to thank you sincerely from the bottom of my heart for even running a United Way campaign. You know, it's a choice, it's not something you have to do, and I think it shows true leadership and commitment to our community to even step up into the ring to want to do such a thing. So Madison City Schools, thank you so much for, for what you do and giving back to your community through the United Way. It means a lot to us. But I'm here today to present the highest per capita award. What this award means is we give it, we pass it around from school to school as, as an acknowledgement of that school who has raised the most money per person who works there and contributed to the campaign. For the last 21 years, this award has been floating around from Madison School to Madison School, and we're here to present it today, okay? So before I do that, though, I'd like to acknowledge the past winners. First of all, Horizon has won it eight times, Liberty in Columbia, three times, Discovery, twice, Bob Jones, and Rainbow Elementary once. Let's give them a round of applause. So the total raised for 2020 Madison, Madison City Schools was $22,177. So thank you so much. And we're pleased to present this year's award to Madison City Board of Education.
They had a, they had a highest per capita.
Anybody in this district knows who drives United. It's not anybody else.
The Rockstar. Absolutely. Have we got you excited?
Yep, come on.
You have a couple to talk through.
No, you go, what are you doing?
This is Michael Forside, he's with Public Supermarkets as well. He's off the public.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So guys, this is the, the third time the Central Office has won this award. Great. This year, they had a highest per capita of $45.33. So well done, well done. Thank you, Latisha. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication behind us.
We are presenting this to Latisha for the second time. Last year, as crazy as these years have been, right? We did a one-on-one, but she got the ridiculously amazing award for her hard work and just commitment and her passion and everything that she does. I've been with a nonprofit for 30 years, and most of those years working here in Madison City has been with Latisha, so I can't imagine it without you. So blessings to you, so I want to give that back to you. A new award, a new certificate, just, just to say to certify, this certificate is awarded to Latisha King for the outstanding results of the 2020 United Way of Madison County campaign. It serves as proof of Latisha's passion for caring for the community, her willingness to go above and beyond, and exemplifies service above self. Blessings to you. You are awesome.
This is not just mine. This is for all those coordinators and all those persons that have given money to United Way. You can't do this on your own. It's not a one-person thing. It takes all of us. So I appreciate all of you giving to United Way.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to thank you guys on what Ben said. This is a choice that people in our community choose to do, is support our community. We all know that it's been an influx of people falling from the sky and wanting to live here on this planet. With that comes a lot of social service needs, extra, extra stuff. And so our 27 health and human service agencies worked overtime. We didn't call, like a lot of other organizations had to call, we could not call. People were in jeopardy, and many times it, it was hunger, one of the largest issues that we dealt with and continue to deal with with the pandemic. Mental health is a number one right now. 211 calls, which is social service needs call number that you call, tripled. The calls have tripled, hunger has tripled, and the amount of and now health issues have tripled. So we're not going anywhere. We have a lot of work to do ahead of us and we can continue to do that with the health of the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Mr. President, Members of the Board, we have Ms. Anne Marie Martin from Partnership for a Drug-Free Community.
Thank you so much. Yes, I'm Anne Marie Martin. I'm the Youth Tobacco and Vaping Prevention Program Manager at Partnership for a Drug-Free Community. And I'm going to give you a brief overview of our program, but first I would like to introduce you to one of our members of our youth advocacy group, Today's Youth Tomorrow's Leaders. This is Pierre Carter. He is a student at Liberty Middle School. And he has a couple of words to say.
Hello, everybody. I am Pierre Carter and.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear it through the mic, through the system?
So there is no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke goes over, kills over 750 non-smoking Alabamians each year. Children exposed to secondhand smoke are at an increased risk for sudden infant death, death syndrome, acute respiratory infections, ear problems, severe asthma, and reduced lung function. Joining the Today's Youth Tomorrow's Leader Partnership for a Drug-Free Community Tobacco Prevention Youth Group in raising awareness about the dangers of smoking and vaping, the, the need to have a 100% tobacco-free school policy in schools, thank you.
Thank you Pierre. So I'm just going to give you a brief overview of what we're doing. So next slide, please. Okay, you know, when you're going up against big tobacco companies, they have multimillion-dollar ad campaigns that try to downplay the dangers of their products. So we focus on the facts and definitions. So right up here, you see, these are all electronic cigarettes. A lot of kids do not realize that Juuls are electronic cigarettes. Pops, electronic cigarettes. And the puff bar disposable system, electronic cigarettes. And on these products, you'll see a label that says they contain nicotine. Well, most people don't realize how much nicotine and a lot of people don't realize how bad nicotine is for you. Next slide, please. Click, please. All right. One pack of cigarettes has 20 cigarettes, 20 milligrams of nicotine. Click, please. One Juul pod, this is according to information from Juul Labs, contains 41.3 milligrams of nicotine. That's about two packs of cigarettes per pod. Click, please. The, the disposable vapes that are so very popular right now, pops and puff bars, they contain as many as two and a half packs of cigarettes worth of nicotine. Click, please. And the sworn vagon pod, it's a really big one. 90 cigarettes worth of nicotine. Next, please. And remember, any of these pod-based systems, and these are the very popular ones, they all contain nicotine and they all contain a lot. Next, please. And now what nicotine does, click, please. It rewires and changes your brain to make you think you have to have it to survive, especially young brains. Because teenagers' brains are still developing up until their mid-20s. Next, please. It also hits your heart, makes it race due to a fight-or-flight response. Again. Nicotine hurts your lungs. And again. It even causes acid reflux. Nicotine adversely affects every part of the human body. Next, please. And now, in early 2020, a law went into effect on the federal level that limited Juul to selling just tobacco and menthol flavors. But immediately, I was hearing in schools, kids asking about pops and puff bars. So I found out what they were and they are disposable vapes. That's the difference between Juul, which the pod itself is disposable, but the device is not. But pops and puff bars, they're all one piece and they are disposable vapes. They do not come under that law, there was a loophole. So all of these disposable vapes can come in any flavor. Click, please. And there are thousands of flavors. And they are all aimed at addicting, attracting kids because, you know, kids like the flavors and colors. And then once they're attracted, they're addicted because of the nicotine. Next, please. And, and you know, the flavors themselves are a real big problem. You know, these flavors, I'll tell kids when I talk to them in schools that, you know, a banana-flavored vape is not made by grinding up a banana. The companies use different flavoring chemicals to create these flavors and a lot of these chemicals can hurt your heart and lungs. Next, please. And again. So the good thing is that the Alabama Department of Public Health has help if you want to quit. So thank you very much for listening to our overview. This is why we have been talking to hundreds and hundreds of students at Liberty and Discovery this year in Madison County Schools, in Huntsville City Schools. It's why Pierre and the other members of our Today's Youth Tomorrow's Leaders Group created an airing-out Big Tobacco's Dirty Laundry exhibit that went to Liberty and Discovery. It was at the Madison Public Library in Monrovia. Now it's at Trianna. And it highlights the different things tobacco executives have said over the years about, you know, they would say in public that they didn't think their products were bad, but they knew and they said so behind the scenes. So thank you very much. This is why we are asking for a 100% smoke-free policy for our schools. Thank you. Oh, one last thing. We're going to be at, Partnership will be at James Clemens for the Health Fair. And also if anyone, especially PTAs, would like a more detailed presentation, we are ready at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Mr. President, Members of the Board, our final presentation is Mr. Byron Hedrick from Lean Frog. Lean Frog did some work for us last year in analyzing our Transportation Department and he, along with our new Director, Dr. Scripture, have put together an overview of that review. Mr. Hedrick did, for your folks in the audience, Mr. Hedrick did meet earlier in the finance meeting and give an update on some of this and will be working with Dr. Scripture and our team as we look at in putting some of these ideas in place. Mr. Hedrick?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, for allowing me to give you the summary of the assessment we did back, it ended in July of 2021. It was really capturing prior years. Go ahead to the next slide. One thing to keep in mind is that our assessment is based off data provided by the system. So therefore, if the data does change, it would change the assessment. We did our best to make sure the data was good. It didn't appear there was any issues with the data, but we always like to mention that we can change if more data is presented to us. The Madison City Transportation Department is not a small venture. There's over 100 buses functioning, over 100 employees on a day-to-day basis that have to move a lot of children to and from school. Part of our assessment was looking at that operation from, all the way from developing routing to how we maintain the buses, to how we ensure fuel management, all the way down to how we do field trips. Next slide. When we looked at these pieces of the organization, we were looking for ways that we could improve efficiency or improve the quality of services being provided by the department. Before I get into a handful of recommendations that may present themselves as significant opportunities, I would like to talk about some of the good things going on in the department. My engineering background, sometimes I get a little critical. I sound very critical, so I want to make sure I'm being fair because the department is doing a lot of good work. Your department has a lot of good people. One of the first things that stood out with, inside the department when we started our review was when we started looking at absenteeism rates, absentee rates. The employees in the Madison City Transportation Department here and want to do the best job they can. 93% of the staff were out five or fewer days over the review period. This is a substantial number. What we see in school systems often in groups like transportation or child nutrition, finding employee absentee is a, is a big issue. It makes everyone's job harder, but inside the Madison City Transportation Department, this is not an issue and it's commendable on the part of all those hardworking employees that you have. Another thing to point out is that overall, the fleet is very new. 8.6 years is the fleet average. That's 60% of the fleet is less than 10 years old. That is substantial compared to other systems. Also, at the time of the assessment, the Transportation Department was taking under improvement opportunities within themselves, such as creating a transportation handbook. That should not be taken lightly. That sense of wanting to improve is something that makes me feel good about the opportunities that we found, that those could be addressed. Overall, when we reviewed the transportation expenditures, we saw good stewardship. The original average is about 4.5% of the school budget being spent on transportation. Madison, although there was a slight increase in 18, 19 to 4.3%, it dropped back down to the 3.6, which is in line with the 3.5, 3.6 that it has been typically running, which shows good stewardship on the part of all those employees who are maintaining those buses. Also, we looked at the fleet as far to see the condition of the fleet, were there issues with certain buses? Were it was the fleet composed of high-quality buses? And what we saw when we reviewed maintenance costs was there were only five buses that had more than $19,000 in maintenance over three, a three-year period. That, that's very commendable. The majority, or the average over that three-year period, it was only $10,000 per bus in maintenance. We also saw that the supplies for the vehicles, the parts that you were keeping on hand were in line with the number of buses that you had. You weren't keeping too few parts, increasing delays and repairs, or keeping too many parts, which was, would be eating up school resources. Over the two-year period that we looked, the work orders were completed in 4.5 days. But it's significant to note that in 18 out of those 24 months, it was 2.3 days or fewer. So your buses, if there is an issue, they're not, they're not being sidelined for a week or long, over about two days and they're back in service, fully functioning, which is commendable. When we reviewed the shop and the parts department within the city, I was pleased to see that the level of organization and cleanliness was that compared to commercial or profit maintenance shops. That's not something that is common in school systems, but there's a lot of pride shown in the workforce and they maintain that organization and the shop is structured in such a way that it is adequate to service the fleet that you have. Although if you add to your fleet, there could be constraints in your ability to, with facilities, meaning the number of vapes available and how many buses can be worked on at any given time. Next slide, please. The other item that we saw was, and this speaks again to the spirit of the maintenance, of the Transportation Department team. In order to be able to service broken-down buses in several systems, you'll go buy a truck, you'll, you'll, set that truck up, they'll take it out. Your Transportation Department took an older bus, a short bus, and they renovated it on the interior and created basically a mobile workshop so that if a bus was broken down, they could go and address that bus. They would have the tools they needed, they could do tire repair, they, they could do light engine work, all from a, a, a school bus, an older school bus that had been taken out of service, transferring kids, they renovated internally. That's kind of the innovation and the, the problem solving and the push inside the department to drive improvements. That, that, that one project, so I wanted to point that out and note it. One thing that was concerning and was on everybody's minds within the department was that it's really hard to find bus drivers right now. That is not a Madison City School issue. That is a school transportation issue that's national right now. The first thing people worry about is, are we paying fairly? Are, are we paying what we should be paying? If we increase our rates, would we get more drivers? Would we get more substitutes? We reviewed the compensation for both bus drivers and substitute drivers and what we saw was that your pay was in line with, with local peers and similar-sized districts. So you're not underpaying and you're not overpaying. You're not, and you're not paying on the low side either. You're, you're paying a fair wage. The issue with the driver shortage is not related to pay as much as it is that the local economy. It's hard to find bus drivers today. Used to, when our economies were more aggravated, people would drive a bus and then they would go work on their farms or work on their jobs. They would do that so they would have insurance. As our economy shifted more to technology and factories, have good benefits and good wages, they're also more tied to a set schedule where those people cannot participate and assist with school transportation. That's what's leading to the shortage in drivers that you guys are seeing. Now, there are some things we did see that could make some substantial improvements and I'd like to cover those. The first one is we need to put adequate resources in place to maintain the efficiency of our routes. At the time of the assessment, the routing was being done by a single employee and that employee serviced as a bus driver on most days, which left them really as a part-time router. That coupled with the number of buses you have is really not enough resources, manpower, if you will, to be able to maintain these routes and, and keep them efficient, particularly when you look at the growth rate that's occurring and has occurred year over year within Madison City Limits. The system had made a substantial investment in routing software, yet there was opportunity to train the person, for the person to have more training, to get a better understanding of the software so they can make full use of the software. Also, there would be opportunities to maybe even use a software company to help do some setup of the software that would help move you guys further along, such as creating the zones, your route zones. Without those being created, there's certain functionality inside the software that, such as routing assist and things that cannot function. So without having that software fully optimized, you're making it even harder to maintain the routing with less people. And then lastly, there's ways, for instance, and again, right now I know everyone, we're in the middle of this PowerSchool shit, but once PowerSchool is established, we could tie PowerSchools to the routing software so that when new students come in, they're automatically showing up and could be added to those routes faster than the manual technique we have now of having to get that data, find out what's changed and then make those edits. So the first part here is getting the people in place and the software really optimized that you've already invested in to, to handle what you need. That has to come first. The next thing would be improving your routing efficiency. You can't do that with a part-time person right now. So we have to put resources in place. Once we have those resources in place, there is a lot of opportunity to optimize bus routes within the city limits and, and the schools that you're working with. We found inside our assessment, the, somewhere between eight to 12 routes that could be incorporated into existing routes that would free up bus drivers to assist with a shortage that you have for bus drivers. There's more opportunity, more substantial opportunity if the district considers such things as re-changing the bell start times, just spreading those start times by 15 minutes or so could allow for the system to optimize and use some three-tier routing successfully. Also, maybe using some Domino routing. Also, looking at the walk, student walk rules and waivers that are in place. No one of these things will fix or optimize. No one of these things will fix or optimize the routes. It'll no doubt end up being a, some hybrid model using probably all three of those things to do it. Once you've put the combination of these factors in place, once we have the resources and we can look at those routes and start making these changes, you'll be able to reduce the number of current routes you have and then use some of those drivers to handle the vacancies that you have in drivers. So we're not talking about reducing people, we're talking about equalizing the workload so that you have a more sustainable system over time. Next slide. Another issue that we saw, it's not an issue really, an opportunity, was to set up some key performance measures that the department could use to know that it was doing well on a year-to-year basis. Also, some key performance measures that you as a board could look at to know how the department was running. And we made a recommended list in the detailed assessment. We already produced the history, historical performance at these levels, and we give you peer, regional and national peers, and how they're performing. We recommend that we establish those so that you guys can keep your finger, as you make these changes, improvements, you should be seeing them inside those performance measures to help use that kind of like a speedometer on your car to dial in the improvements. The other thing we would recommend is developing procedures, and possibly these could be added to the transportation handbook. We would want to make sure that when we develop those procedures, that instead of it just being solely, this is the department, we need to talk about how the transportation and the schools interact, and how the principals and the transportation director, how they work together as a team to control the quality and efficiency of the transportation services being delivered. Okay? One more. There we go. I've put together a list of some policies and procedures that the system may want to consider. I'm not saying all of these should be implemented, but I do think they should be reviewed and considered for use. Inside the detailed assessment, I gave some details regarding each one of these that are listed on this slide so that you guys could review and maybe decide if you wanted to add those into the transportation manual to make it a little more complete. And then lastly, each year, I would suggest that that transportation handbook be reviewed by a cross-functional team, not just the Transportation Department, but including your principals, so that they can work together in transportation. Transportation is not going to work well as an island. We have to have the principal buy-in and understanding, and we have to have those connected. Not a lot of recommendations, but these would make significant improvements in both the efficiency and the quality of services currently being delivered. Any questions that you guys would have?
I know, Board, that Mr. Hedrick's going to continue to work now that Dr. Scripture has joined our team and Mr. Jones, and we will plan in a couple of weeks or so to have them come back to you. Dr. Scripture's already started working on some of these areas, and so he wants to come and present some things that he's working on. He and Mr. Jones have been working in the operations with and continue to work with Mr. Hedrick. So Byron, I've worked with you before, and you always, your team does a great job, and we know you have a little more stake here as you're in the community and that, and we appreciate the work that you did and your team did, and we look forward to taking that and fleshing it out as we continue in transportation.
Thank you, guys, for the opportunity. Like Dr. Nichols said, having three students overall, two gone, still one left, though, is near and dear to my heart. So I appreciate the opportunity to help my local system like I do other systems across the state. You guys have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't know if you've ever been applauded before, Byron. That's pretty good. That's all the presentations, Mr. President.
Dr. Nichols, with that being all the presentations, we will move into public comments. Members of the public that have registered to speak and wish to speak can come forward for three minutes, and I just ask that where there might be differing opinions given by those speakers that we're respectful of all, and we give them our three minutes.
Ms. King?
I'm familiar with this. Good to see you all. The English clergyman Frederick William Robertson once famously stated, "There are three things in the world that deserve no mercy: hypocrisy, fraud, and tyranny." I stand here today speaking to this appointed body, which has been entrusted with the education of our children, and wonder if that quote makes you guys uncomfortable, because it should. Your hypocrisy is on full display when the superintendent mandates that children wear masks at the school all day while he and his wife mingle at the Rose Bowl, maskless, boning, enjoying life. It was a great night, so I heard. Your willful enforcement of the arbitrary mask mandate for our children that are based on fraudulent justifications are sickening. You know full well that children are the lowest risk of transmission in our community, that masks are completely ineffective against aerosols, and that not one single child from the age zero to seventeen has died of COVID in the state of Alabama. Yet, we still require only children to wear masks at school all day. Your refusal to take any legislative action whatsoever to disrespect our concerns with your comments, both in public and in private, and to post armed guards at the door that we pay, is just outrageous. This is the second time that I have been told that I was going to be arrested for trespassing in a public building, but yet last week, even though our children are required to wear masks at school, they're not required to wear masks here. I am here as a parent and a community advocate because for far too long, we have ignored the dealings of these tiny councils. We have jobs, we have families, we have lives. We just want to be left alone to raise our children, worship as we please, and be free to pursue our dreams. But now, when we need you to, for once in our lives, stand up for us, stand up for our children, stand up for our community, you've turned your backs. You've turned your backs on all of us. And as a result, now we're awake. We see in full display the hypocrisy. Now we see the cancer of politics that has crept into our lives through these little meetings that everybody, you know, didn't pay any attention to. In the last thirty days, you've overreached and violated several of our constitutional and fundamental rights. We parents have given you the false sense of power, and now we're taking that back. You made the mistake of messing with our children, and there will be legal ramifications that are going to happen. Know that your lives, just as our children's lives, are affected by this, and as uncomfortable as they feel and as you make them feel on a daily basis, you will feel that discomfort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Finnegan Walker.
Hey.
Hi.
My name is Finnegan Walker, and I'm a junior at Bob Jones High School. I'm a National Honor Society member and in the Young Advocates for Quality Club. I'm also on the Bob Jones Swim and Dive Team, as you can probably see from my hair and lack of shoes. We are getting ready for a meet this weekend, but I left a little early so I can speak to you. I'm here to thank you for being willing to update the current student dress code. As it stands, the Madison City Schools dress code is very hard to understand because what teachers and principals are currently enforcing is not clearly stated anywhere in the student handbook or any policy online I can find. Personally, I have never been affected by the dress code. My female friends, classmates, and teammates certainly have, especially lately. I realize the dress code is in place to eliminate distractions and disruptions during class, but pulling girls out of class is not only more disruptive, but it also causes them to lose less time learning, to lose more time learning, sorry. Any dress code that discriminates against a person for their gender is also not a great dress code. I'm glad that you're willing to update it, and I would like to respectfully ask that you consider including students on the committee for updating the policy. We have several good ideas that we think you would like. Thank you again and for hearing my comment and for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
And that's the end of public comments, and we will move into action items. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the consent agenda items, A, minutes number twenty-one dash twenty-one, August thirtieth, 2021; B, the L.A.A. school makeup option request form to grant a makeup day for August thirty-first, 2021, due to Governor Ivey's declaring a state of emergency for counties in Alabama; C, bid number twenty-two-one dash nineteen, which is CMP equipment from Birmingham Restaurant Supply, who presented the low responsible bid, meeting all specifications, for thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars; D, bid number twenty-two-one dash seventeen, a termite from Alabama Professional Services, who presented the lowest bid for the total cost of fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars for one year; and E, a clinical internship agreement binding between the City of Madison Board of Education on behalf of James Clemens High School and the Madison Village.
Board, the superintendent recommends the approval of the consent agenda that you have before you. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Ferrer and a second by Ms. Slesman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Consent agenda passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the 2021 financial and bank reconciliation statements for Madison City Schools. Ms. Williams will come and present that at this time.
Good evening, Dr. Nichols and board, again. As far as the July financial statements, we are currently, for the month of July, we should be at eighty-three point thirty-three percent. As far as our revenues, we are at eighty-four percent, and our expenditures, we are at sixty-two percent.
All right, board, can I have a motion and a second for approval of the July 2021 financial and bank reconciliation statements?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hulsey and a second by Mr. Cummings. We had a finance meeting this afternoon at four, and unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but the rest of the board was there in person. Do you have anything that you'd like to discuss regarding these reconciliation statements?
Nothing further.
Nothing further, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of July 2021 budget amendment presented for Madison City Schools, as Ms. Williams here presents that.
Yes, and for the July budget amendment, the net effect was a hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars, and that was due to just transfers into our general fund. We're currently at forty point three operating days, and we are in good standing.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the July 2021 budget amendment. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hulsey and a second by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion on this board? No discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, we have met the requirement of the state to have two budget hearings. I recommend for your approval the 2021-2022 Madison City School budget.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the 2021-2022 Madison City Schools budget. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cummings and a second by Mr. Ferrer. Any discussion on this board? No discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, each year, the Alabama Association of School Boards presents the opportunity for boards of education to nominate individuals to be presented as an all-state school board member. Open the nominations to this board for nominating someone for that, please.
No. I nominate Mr. Tim Holtkamp.
I hear any other nominations?
All right, so...
Mr. Holtkamp, you have to get the vote for yourself, so I can't do that, I'm sorry, but you're in charge of getting the a's and n's for yourself.
So the board has nominated Tim Holtkamp for Alabama Association of School Boards, all-state school board member. I guess we just hold it for a vote, right?
Yes, sir.
We don't need a second.
No, sir. I think you're going to win by acclimatization.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining?
I abstain.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the honor and the work that's gone into it. Thank you so much. Dr. Nichols, personnel actions.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval supplemental contracts for work to be performed by the Madison City School District.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of supplemental contracts for the work performed for the school district. Can I have a motion, well, can these be taken as a group? Seeing that a group's fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Slesman and a second by Mr. Ferrer. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, before we move forward, I'd just like to recognize a couple of things on our supplemental contract. I'm very appreciative of our instructional staff as we continue to use our ESER funds this summer, as the board is aware. We offered some help with study skills and those types of activities in our summer school program. Part of what you just approved will be homework hotline tutors, and so we will establish a schedule so that we offer after-school homework hotline tutoring that they can do, webexing with students that need help, also our after-school tutoring programs that we'll offer, and also in that mentors to help those teachers that will be entering into the National Board Certified Teacher Program. And so I'm very appreciative of our instructional staff for doing that. I don't believe we've ever had virtual hotline tutors before, so this is a new adventure for us, and we're going to broadcast that and communicate that to parents and students and hope that we have a lot of... I would have really enjoyed that when my daughter had calculus. That's all I'm going to say about that, but I would have liked to have been able to webex to help her, so we're looking forward to that. Appreciate Dr. Donaldson and our staff for working through that. Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval preliminary advanced teacher excellence and accountability mathematics and science team contracts for the teachers presented before you.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of the teams contracts. Can these be taken as a group? Seeing that a group's fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Slesman and a second by Mr. Ferrer. Any discussion?
I noticed that one of the contracts still has a to-be-determined salary amount. Is that an issue at all?
It now, Mr. Hulsey, we were able to correct that this afternoon. We were waiting on information, background, teaching experience information, and we have that now, so that will be updated in there. We just didn't like to put that total in until we can verify the years of experience to go with it, so that's what that is.
Thank you.
Excellent, great question. Anything further? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval of the list of substitutes presented before you. presented before you.
Board, can this superintendent recommends approval of this list of substitutes? Can this be taken as a group? Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ferrer and a second by Ms. Lesman. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, personnel actions.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for your approval the remainder of personnel actions and agenda presented before you with extended leaves, resignations, and other areas presented in the personnel action.
Board, Dr. Nichols recommends approval of the remaining personnel actions. Can these be taken as a group? Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Ferrer and a second by Mr. Halsey. Any discussion, board? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, is any that you'd like to bring attention to?
Not tonight, no, sir.
Excellent, all right, so with no further actions on the agenda, we will move to superintendent comments.
Mr. President, members of the board, just a couple of things. First of all, I want to congratulate Ms. King, who will not, she, we get a trophy because of Ms. King, but but I promise you that, what did they call that star? Ridiculously what, Ms. King?
Awesome.
Awesome.
Ridiculously awesome.
I know, because I, you are ridiculously awesome every day, and.
And that's a back-to-back win.
That's a back-to-back win. That's co-championships, right? You and Nick Saban trying to do that, so. But but you, Ms. King is is the heartbeat of what we do, and she she's like the air-traffic controller of the school district. She keeps all the planes in the air, and and I would crash and burn without her, I can promise you, and so I appreciate her. We're going to have some exciting news to announce next week, coming out about national merit finalist, and and Dr. Donaldson's making me hold that because it's embargoed, but I'm going to be real proud, like a proud Papa of all the hard work, our principals, our teachers, and our moms and dads, and our community. We're blessed where we are and where we live, and we're going to celebrate some exciting news on that. I will meet next week for the first time with my student advisory committee. I have twenty students from each high school, ten juniors and ten seniors. I'll meet with them three or four times this year. We're going to discuss some data that we got back on our strategic plan. We're going to discuss dress codes, we're going to discuss whatever else, and I look forward to to meeting with these young leaders and and getting feedback from them. I did that indicator, and I certainly enjoyed it, and I will say, as we developed the strategic plan back then, there were some several big items that came out of their group that were on that list, and so I'm looking forward to that. I hear music, so I know there's a ballgame, so I've I gotta be quick, but but I'm going I'm going to do this one. I appreciate Officer Cocker here tonight, and Officer Jewel. Officer Jewel, you need to come up here just a second. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon, we had a student who came ill, lived in middle school, and Nurse Tunsil and Officer Jewel, we will have Nurse Tunsil back with us, performed CPR, student, and used the AED on that student. That student is in stable condition tonight, can't get in any more of their cell information or without. I appreciate you. I appreciate the quick response you gave our kids. I know if Officer Cocker, Officer Dawes, or any of them, they rushed to do that, our SROs, our ministry, and our nurses, we will have our nurse here. Any welcome? I can't thank you enough. This is our kid today. Some people see a uniform, I see a heart. I appreciate it. Thank you. Officer Jewel and Officer Cocker stand here tonight and represent other members of the SROs and members of the Police Department in our community who take care of us. Today, paramedics came. I was at the hospital with Mr. Brown, and the paramedic team was there. I know what they did, and we're blessed to have servants in our community that respond quickly whenever we call, and just appreciate them so much for that today, and so thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Couldn't couldn't have said it better, so I'm sure nobody wants to follow that. But but we will stay with our what's become usual order, and we'll go with Ms. Lesman.
Thank you. Actually, I got chills when you came up, Officer Jewel. Just reminds you how things can just change in an instant, and you you have to be quick, and so anybody that thinks these SROs are just roaming around, they got to be trained and ready to react, and we appreciate you. Thank you. I'm going to echo too, Ms. King, we love you. She had, especially this week, she's done some stuff for the board, and like last minute, and didn't complain, and got it done, and got it done right. And and anybody that you talk to will say, if Ms. King is doing it, it's going to be done right, and you listen to her, and she always answers her phone for me. She she knows exactly any question I have, so I appreciate you, and congratulations on your award, as well as the central office. Yes, congratulations. You guys are just always giving and giving, and and then to get that award, it's it just is over the top, and we appreciate you. Thank you so much. It was really nice to see some recognitions tonight, and I know I won't go too long either, but I I really enjoyed seeing the students here, and thank you, PTA, for coming out and introducing all your staff, well, I call it, you know, volunteers, it's not, you're not getting paid, and many of you are doing multiple roles, which, if anybody's watching this online, you know, if you're a parent and want to step up and help out on some of these roles, we're all busy, we are all busy, I know, and even just an hour of your time a week or, you know, once a month is huge for PTA. We appreciate you, too. And I think I think that's all I have, so, oh, congratulations, Tim, or Mr. Holtkamp. I think you are an excellent candidate, and look forward to it. Thank you for all your guidance and your mentoring for me. I know it's another person I call every, actually, I kind of bug everybody, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Halsey.
Very briefly, I just want to run down a list of congratulations again. Congratulations to our students who are recognized for Boys State and Girls State. It's a tremendous honor for all of them. Thank you again to all of our PTA leaders, those who are still here, and those who cannot be here. Thank you for all of your wonderful service and commitment to our schools and our students. You certainly make everything go in our school system from that standpoint, and we appreciate all your service. Congratulations to Ms. King for being awesome all the time, not just this week, but all your hard work the United Way just speaks a lot to your heart and your willingness to serve and be a servant leader in our school system. I want to recognize and congratulate our two students who spoke tonight, Pierre from Liberty and Finnegan from Bob Jones. Thank you for your comments. It's not easy to get in front of a bunch of people and speak, so I really appreciate them willingness, their willingness to do that, and how well they represented themselves. Congratulations to to Tim for your nomination, certainly well-deserved, and we will be rooting for you in that process. And again, finally, Officer Jewel, thank you for your service and for your quick response today. A few, just reminded me, a few weeks ago at work, I had CPR training, and if you had the opportunity to do that, don't take it for granted, because you never know when you may have to be called upon to use it. So thank you for your quick response today and for all you did for our student. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halsey. Mr. Cummings?
Officer Jewel, thank you so much. You just don't know, when we heard the news, and I mean, heard the reaction and your response, it was just, it's kind of overwhelming to think that, you know, our SRO officers, like Boy Member Lesman said, they're not just walking around the schools. I mean, they're taking action, and it was just, it's just amazing. Just want to thank you for that. And I do have a question for the PTA. Ms. Walker, am I officially a mega-member of the PTA now? Okay. My wife was in here early, and I said, babe, please pay for my membership for the PTA. Something good to go. I will say, the PTA mentioned that Leader in Me program, and as we sit here and listen to the Boys and Girls State members, you know, I thought about that. My son went to Horizon Elementary School, and I was one of those parents to where we got phone calls all the time from our son, and it was so many phone calls where every time the phone rang, you would think, oh, my goodness, I mean, I got to go to the school again. And I tell you what, you know, the leadership at Horizon, they put Cameron in that Leader in Me program, and I tell you, that program, you know, changes life. He came to the board and actually presented some information to the Board of Education. Of course, I wasn't a member then, but, so I will say, I just want to challenge all of our elementary leaders and principals to find those diamonds in the rough and just continue to polish those diamonds, because you don't know where they headed as they move on through their life. I also want to, I want to congratulate Ms. King, congratulate Tim on your recognition, and we will be rooting for you guys. Ms. King, you know you're a rock star in our eyes all the time. I also want to mention that the leadership and the opportunity, the educational opportunities and exposure that our schools are giving our kids are amazing. Every time I come and our students come up here and you hear about the program that we have in our system, you realize we are grooming our kids for global success. And for Mr. Finnegan Walker to come up here from a swim meet and speak to help his classmates in in a public setting, and it's just outstanding, the tools that these kids are going through our system, obtaining. I just want, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Mr. Ferrer?
I'd like to echo what everybody said, Ms. King. Thank you for what you do. Happy birthday. So also, I would like to to congratulate or finance, your finance team, you know, they they're the ones who who make sure we we provide a lot of, like Mr. Cummings says, a lot of opportunities, and they're the ones who are tasked to make sure we're properly funded, so we are able to be successful. So thank you. Thank you for all, everything you guys do. I just want to touch on on something for the Transportation Department, just to give you a perspective how wonderful they are. I know they're, we we got to tweak some things, but this is why. You have to understand that they, we get between eight hundred new houses within Triana and Madison every year. We have resown multiple times within the last five years. We get around a thousand, a thousand-plus new students every year. We get around four hundred student, new growth students. So because of this, there's a constantly, they're constantly changing and evolving, and they're responsible to provide you and make sure your kids are on time every day. So just please take that to them and let them know that just because we're presenting that we're looking for additional opportunities, that doesn't take away of how great they are. And with that said, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrer. Well, I do want to say thanks for for the nomination from the board, for the for the all-star consideration, and, you know, that that'll, Madison City's not a stranger to that award, it's, but it's gone to to folks that have had, that have that have really contributed, former President Dr. Johnson and former President Ms. Bartlet, and and so I I appreciate your support and 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 thank you for thinking that I'm that I'm worthy. I feel like, you know, just as all you are, you're all, you know, you're all volunteers, and you're 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 just finding a place to serve in the community, and and you've and you've 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 been appointed to this position by the city council because of the great trust they have in you, and I just appreciate the trust you have in me and and nominating me for that and letting me serve as your president, so I appreciate that. Yes, Ms. King, you're ridiculously awesome, and everybody knows it, and it's just really fun to say, because you can't stand for us to say it. So congratulations, and congratulations on 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 pulling this trophy back to central office and 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 having bragging rights over the schools now, so you do great work, you do great work for everybody, and and that's obviously very noticeable. Officers Jewel and Cocker, thank you for supporting us again here tonight, and and obviously, Officer Jewel, you're just, your service today was was outstanding, and and the district is different because of it today, and so we thank you. We have a policy committee meeting coming up on September twenty-second, and we have our next, our next, our fall board schedule has now been posted. We have a a instruction meeting at four P M. on September thirtieth, and that'll be followed by a board meeting on September thirtieth at five P M. here in the boardroom office, in the, here in the boardroom. If there's, I feel like I'm forgetting something, but but we need to get to a football game, and and so I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to wrap it up. If there's a.
The parade for James Clemens.
Yes?
I wish you. I don't think it's on the thirtieth. Okay, never mind.
No, it's on the twenty-third.
Okay.
The James Clemens Homecoming Parade's on the twenty-third.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing further, I'll take a a motion and a second for adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Ferrer. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining?